Okay, I think we're good.
Very good.
All right, what's the date today? September 30th. All right, welcome to the September 30th Select Board Meeting. Very quickly, I just want to remind people that, of course, if you're not watching, you're not going to hear this, but what the heck. There are two ways to view this now, which is incredible. One is cable, Verizon Channel 38, Comcast Channel 6, and now we are livestreamed on YouTube. All you need to do is go to the website, go to the homepage, and there'll be live meetings. Click on it, and the link is right there. So that only took two and a half years, which I'm never going to get back. Okay, ready to jump right into the agenda? Here we go. We have some announcements. Do you want to say them? Karen, you want me to go?
All right, I can say them if you'd like. So the first one is that we're going to have a flu clinic run by the Town of Millis Board of Health at the Council on Aging on October 10th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. That's a clinic that's for 65 and older. It's the high-dose flu vaccine, and there's a link to register. It's on the Facebook page, and we also have it on the website. And then here at the Veterans Memorial Building on October 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., that's for everybody, and so that's for eight-plus, basically, standard flu vaccine. And you can register for that as well, so we encourage you to do that if you are interested. And, sorry, I'm out of order here. We also have, at the Millis Public Library, they have something called Coffee Connections. That's going to be on Saturday, October 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can stop by and support the Fall Book Sale, and they're going to have free coffee, donated by New England Coffee, so anyone who's on duty can swing on by. Free raffle and door prizes and things for the kids, so go join them at the library. And I think that is it.
That's it for announcements. Very good. Okay, now we have a couple-
I actually have one if I can.
Of course, you always have one. Go ahead.
Thank you. The Fire Department's having a fire prevention open house on Sunday, this Sunday, October 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Should be a lot of fun, family fun, good for kids. My girl scout troop will be there making bracelets. I know there's a stuffy animal clinic. There's a bunch of things going on with the Fire Department that day, so that'll be a great event, too, this Sunday.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Erin. We're going to have a couple of votes, so you want to make a motion, Craig? You don't have- Do you have the motions?
No, I've got it.
Oh, you got them? Go ahead.
Sure. I move to close the November 19th, 2024 Fall Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number two, Erin?
I move to open the November 19th, 2024 Special Town Meeting Warrant and to close it at 4:30 p.m. on October 15th, 2024.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now we have, we're moving, is it 7:05? Yep. Appointments. We have an appointment. Mike, you want to-
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet is a letter from Chief Barrett in regards to an appointment. Recently, the department had the retirement of a full-time firefighter, Paul Shaw. The department posted the open position in-house and received four qualified candidates from our call department. We held interviews where they answered questions, as well as an assessment portion where they had scenario-based questions. EMS Coordinator Brian Palmeno and I held the interviews, and after reviewing all the information, we were able to come to a unanimous decision that Tim Smith is our recommendation. I, there's, I don't know if the chief was going to come up, which he already has-
There he is.
-to talk a little bit about his background. So I'll turn it over to you, Chief.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so first off, we just want to give a quick thank you to Paul Shaw. 28 years of service to the Town of Millis. He retired. We're hoping to have him here at a future board meeting to be acknowledged. We are here tonight to appoint Tim Smith as a full-time firefighter paramedic. Again, this isn't a new position. This is filling a retired position. Tim is a 2022 graduate of Westfield State University. He's currently enrolled at Pro EMS to get his paramedic, which he's set to finish up about December, some testing, and we hope to have him working as a paramedic with under a year. With this appointment, he has two years to get it, to meet the requirement, and we're hoping to have him done a little bit quicker. Tim's a third-generation firefighter. His grandfather, George, was a firefighter. He was actually chief for a small period of time. And his father, Dan, who was a sergeant on the Franklin Police Department, was also a call firefighter with us. So it's great to have Tim here. It's a family affair, and we're excited to have it. He has a clean quarry. He's, physical is up to date, so we are here tonight to recommend appointment.
So, Madam Chair, upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, I am requesting that the Board ratify my appointment of Timothy Smith as a full-time firefighter EMT, subject to obtaining a paramedic certification within two years of appointment.
Okay, Erin?
I move to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Timothy Smith as a full-time firefighter EMT, subject to obtaining a paramedic certification within two years.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent. If it's okay with the Board, we'd like to invite Tim up and his grandmother Suzanne Lachlan to pin his badge on him.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Okay, what do you got next?
Sure. Madam Chair, in your packet is another letter from Chief Barrett requesting an appointment of a temporary full-time firefighter paramedic, the appointment of Ryan Deasy. So, Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
So unfortunately, we have an upcoming medical retirement. Within the next six months, we will lose one of our firefighters to an on-the-job injury. What we've done in the past is we've hired a temporary replacement. That person comes in, they work a full-time shift, they learn the system, and then after the position is vacant, we are able to appoint that person to full-time. Ryan was in the interviews for this position, did very well in the interviews and the Assessment Center. He's been working part-time, helping us fill shifts. We're very excited to actually have him on board as well, so I'm asking tonight that we make him a temporary full-time firefighter until that position is vacant.
Madam Chair, upon the recommendation of the Fire Chief, I'm requesting that the Board ratify my appointment of Ryan Deasy as a temporary full-time firefighter paramedic.
Erin?
I move to ratify the town administrator's appointment of Ryan Deasy as a temporary full-time firefighter paramedic.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Congratulations. Ryan? Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And if I could just ask you for a minute. This past week, one of our firefighters was acknowledged at the state level at a fire prevention convention the state fire marshal held. We're safe educator, Jason Otis Wilson was one of the finalists for the position. In our eyes, Otis does the best job in the state. He lost to the Holliston Chief, which we think was fixed, and I'll say that publicly. Otis does a great job for us. We're very lucky to have him, and I figured since he was here tonight, if we could just take a quick second to congratulate him. Excellent. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item.
The retail-
7:15, we're good.
Yeah, there is the Massus Exodus moment.
Really, they're leaving?
You don't want to stay? It's going to be exciting.
All right, you ready?
I'm set.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, just, I know on-call, in case anyone's following along with the agenda, on-call, library assistant appointment is on here. We are holding off on that until October 7th, so just FYI.
Okay. We have an item, a licensing authority? Do you know anything about that?
I do. So, let me wait a second here.
Rick, when you get out there, can you move on?
We're going to write down this.
Thank you.
He knows the drill. So, as the Select Board, you are considered the local licensing authorities for the ABC, which is the Alcoholics Beverages Control Commission here in the state of Massachusetts. And Millis Mobile, right down the street here, does have a license to sell beer and wine, and they just made a few changes, and in order for them to do those changes, you as the LLA have to approve them. So we've gone through all of the paperwork. This is kind of the last piece of the puzzle. They have everything they need, so you are looking to approve them for a change of manager, change of officers, change of corporate name, transfer of stock, as well as change of DBA. So they're going for, their, the licensee name is GMI Gas Incorporated, and they're doing business as Millis Mobile.
Okey-doaks. Erin, you ready?
I move to approve, acting as the local licensing authority, the request for a change of manager, change of officers, change of corporate name, transfer of stock, and change of DBA for GMI Gas Incorporated, DBA Millis Mobile, as amended.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
So do we sign?
You do. Yes.
Erin, do we sign this piece of paper? Okay.
When do you need a hearing?
As long as there are two signatures, we are okay, so, or if you want to stop by this week, you can. And I'm just looking at this again, and I apologize. I'm off my, I'm off my game tonight. This was actually a hearing, so you need to vote to open the hearing. If you wanted to vote to open the hearing, we will just do that.
In case there's anyone here.
I move to open the hearing.
Second.
Okay, moved in second and to open the hearing?
For Millis Mobile? If there is anyone who wants to speak to it.
Aye. Anybody here from Millis Mobile? Nope?
Nope, okay, so that you can-
Anyone here wanted to speak on this issue at all? Nope?
Nope.
All right.
Okay, so-
You can close the hearing?
We closed the hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved in second and to close the hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
And you've made the motion, so you're okay. So we have done it properly. Thank you. Sorry about that. We will reverse the order.
Okay, next. We have a request from the Millis Lions Club. So, they'd like to display some artifacts in one of the rooms here at Town Hall, and Mr. Rick Terrara is going to go to the microphone and make a speech.
How we can top those firefighters?
I don't even-
Yes, you didn't bring a posse with you, so.
Well, I have a Millis Lion over here that's Michael Schrona Ceding's secretary.
Okay.
My, my call to you was that I wanted to see if the Lions, why don't I show this first? This is the Millis Lions chart. April 12th, 1945, we started here in Millis. So this April 12th, 2025, we'll be here, 80 years in the Town of Millis, serving the Town of Millis.
Wow.
These are the original charters on here. I'd like to get that replaced, but this is an antique-type portrait that they put up years ago. I also have another one. This was given by the Board of Selectmen in our 50th anniversary by Muriel Hoddin, James McCaffrey, I think everybody knows him, and also Gary Olet. And you know that Muriel and Gary passed away. Thank them for their service. But they gave us that when we reached our 50th goal here in the Millis Lions.
We may have to come up with something for 80, is what I'm thinking. I said, I'm thinking that's what you're pitching. We may need to come up with something for 80. We'll start working on it now.
That's nice, yeah.
But we've been here, like I say, I've been in the Lions for 30 years, and Mike's been in 28, so we're still, we're still going. I just wanted to make a comment on this, I should get my mic over here. This is a letter, when I was president, that we donated the Board of Directors table and chairs in room 206. I don't know where that is now. Is that still there?
We just changed it, actually, as a matter of fact.
You just changed out the table?
We just changed out the table and chairs out there.
Yeah.
And we donated that in 1999. And I still have the letters. I have a lot of-
Well, I think we got our money on those.
In the last 35 years, that was pretty impressive.
Well, I have a lot of articles and stuff that we would like to put in that room and kind of make it like a Lions room. I went to the veterans about two weeks ago, and they're all for it also. And I'm sure, God bless her soul, if Hindi was here today, she would say, "Go for it," because she's got such an unbelievable display, and the wonderful cabinets that the, I'm sorry, I have to say it, but the Rosenfels put in all around this town hall are great. I mean, the legacy she's put in here of all her collection is fantastic. So we just want that little area of 206 to put some of our paraphernalia in there. This is the party we had down the Primavera at one time, and the 50-year party, it was a book, and all the people who contributed to it.
Rick, I just have a quick question. Is this a forever installation?
Yeah, I want to put it up there so that when people come up, they'll see the charter-
But it doesn't have an end. It's a forever?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Something that will leave a legacy here for the Lions, which will still serve the town. I hope to serve it many years from now, if I'm still around. But anyways, that's what we're looking for.
Rick, are you looking for just the, so this, for those who aren't familiar, room 206, it has the windows that overlook 109, it's the front of the building, and then there are built-ins cases, glass cases. Are you looking to put the things in the glass cases?
I would love to go in the glass cases because we get albums of photos-
Yes.
-that people like. Billy Whalen, who was the building inspector here for years, and everybody who served the town is, one time or another, has been in the Lions Club, veterans. We had a lot of veterans in the Lions Club, so all their pictures are being saved by me and my home, and where you have the water by a lamp and everything here, it would be great to keep that, because I don't want to be responsible for it anymore.
You know, not for nothing, you honored my mother as the-
Oh, God.
Right, as the Person of the Year. It was the first time you honored a woman.
Yes, we did, yes.
I remember that.
Yeah, and it was unanimous, let me tell you.
Yeah. Well, I can't say no.
Okay.
I'm not going to say no.
And I believe Erin Underhill is a Lion.
She is, correct?
I am.
You are? So, do we, what do we have?
We have a motion.
We have a motion?
You have a motion.
You have a blank there. We just-
Well, you can just, you can just strike the last three, four words.
Okay.
There's just, there's just one thing.
Hold on. Erin, Erin, Erin.
To display artifacts relating to the history of the Lions Club. Erin, the cases in room 20-
Erin, one second. Go ahead, Rick, sorry.
Where the, they have the two windows in there, and that, if we could put our, you know, our photos and everything, it'll be locked up in there, like with a lock. If we put the lock on, and if we can be guided by somebody here, the building inspector who wants to show us how to decorate it, we'll go, whatever they say, we'll go by whatever they say.
What do you mean, put the lock on what?
Well, in other words, put the pictures into the, into that cases with the windows and everything, and kind of preserve them.
Into the built-ins, he's saying. So you want the built-ins to lock?
Right. And you would have the key, I wouldn't tell you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, you just need to get a locksmith.
Yeah, we can figure that piece out.
No, we'll do it professionally and have it done.
You can use the company they use here, who's terrific.
Yes, yes.
There you go. Right, and then you would have the key to it.
All right, is that it?
Yeah, I guess that's about it. I mean, it's a-
Do you have a show and tell?
Pardon?
Any more show and tell?
No, I just brought a couple. I have a lot, but I just, I only brought these two.
We'll look at it. All right, sorry, Erin.
Nice one to be having.
Erin, go again. Sorry about that.
Unless you want me to replace this.
No. Go ahead.
All right. I move as a board to approve the request from the Millis Lions Club to display artifacts relating to the history of the Lions Club and the cases in room 206 at the Veterans Memorial Building.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I have, I have one more question, okay. The Field of Flags that we do every year, which we give donations to the Fisher House.
To the what house?
The Fisher House in Boston, which they help wounded officers or veterans, and when they have no place to stay, they stay there for free.
Okay.
So everybody gives to the Fisher House. Karen knows about this, so, and so the Field of Flags, we usually do it for two weeks. We sell each, you sponsor a flag for $10, and we take that flag. I sponsor four flags for, because I had four family members who were killed in the wars. I sponsor four, you know, that doesn't have to be KIA, that could be your father, your mother, your sisters, your brothers. It doesn't matter, as long as they're a veteran. You donate the $10, we take a flag, we put it up. We wanted to have the display from the 3rd-
Of what?
Of November-
Yeah.
-to the 24th.
So that's three weeks?
Yes.
Yes, instead of the two.
Okay.
This way, I give a little more to it, and then it'll be during the, actually, it'll be during the election time, plus past the Veterans Day, and then keep it up there for three weeks, if that's okay with you.
I think the only reason we typically do two is because the lawn needs mowing, and so that's why they do, but I would think by November, the lawn is not going to be growing, so three weeks should be totally fine. But I think that's where the two weeks had always come from.
Okay.
Yeah, it takes, it takes us about two, two and a half hours to just to set up.
The flag displays, not this one.
It takes you a week to put them in and a week to take them out.
Oh, we take them right, oh, we take them right in, right real fast.
No one knows.
But anyways, I appreciate everything.
Remember the flags, Erin, how fun that was, putting the flags in?
She helped.
Yes, that was fun.
All right, we got a motion for that, Erin?
We do.
Yes. I move that the board approve installation of a field of flags by Millis Lions in honor of Veterans Day from November 3rd through the 24th, 2024, on the lawn in front of the Veterans Memorial Building.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye? Unanimous. All right, thanks, Rick. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we got now here?
Oh, no, she's here. She's, I see her.
We have that, we have that. 7:30?
Now we have Kirsten Ryan.
We have a minute.
It's not a hearing, so I think you can go ahead.
Okay.
Jump right in.
Jump right in. We want to review the proposed article. Do we have somebody here?
Yes, Kirsten is on Zoom.
Kirsten is on Zoom.
Oh.
Hi.
There she is. Hi, Kirsten.
I'm here. Thanks.
We're on time. We're ahead of time.
I know, imagine that.
Okay. You want me to wait, or?
No, 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 go right ahead.
Fire away.
Great. I have a very short presentation to orient everyone here on the-
Joyce?
Get situated.
I keep saying that. Yep, we can see it. Oh, we saw it.
That was like, I was there.
I didn't know if you thought we couldn't see it.
Okay. Can you see it, like, hesitation?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, look, I can even use this.
There you go.
It's exciting.
I'm here to, I'm here to Ryan, client builder, and I'm here to talk about the water management by law revision that we've been working on with Gudzinski and Mr. McKay and others. So, those who are not aware, and Millis has a large management by law already, an existing one that was adopted in 2000, and it's section, Article 8, section 38 of the general bylaws. And the purpose, excepted here, is to protect public health, safety, welfare by allowing the town to restrict water use. Essentially, a water conservation by law, and it, you know, ties back to declaring a water supply, a state of water supply conservation by the town, or if FASTEP issues a creative water supply emergency. So, why is a revision needed? So, just to kind of set the stage, large public well, water well supply withdrawals are regulated by the State Water Management Act, or Mass General Lodge, or 21G, and this governs the capabilities of the state's water resources. Millis has had a WMA permit since 1989 where its water supply wells, and FASTEP undergoes periodic review of those permits and issues revisions, and they recently reissued Millis' permit. Basically, they've been going around reviewing all of the WMA permits to update them, to incorporate regulation changes that were enacted in 2014. So, speaking of quite a while, they finally came around to Millis and issued a permit in December 2023. So, we went and took a look at that permit and consulted with Jim McKay and Mike Gudzinski and talked about the changes that are required. Basically, there's two major things that the new permit requires to align with the new regulations, basically just to get it up to date with the existing regulations, and that is updates to the bylaw and then the adoption of additional water conservation measures to align with the water conservation standards. So, we've got together recently, sort of our process was to take the existing bylaw, compare it to what the requirements are, develop a red-line version, and then we reviewed that with the BPW and the town administrator and discussed it with them. And then I think Jay Hallerman, town council, is also reviewing it. I don't know if he's completed his review yet, but I think that's our part of the process. So, just a brief summary of what the changes are required. Basically, greater restrictions on non-essential seasonal outdoor water use, more or less watering laws. The existing bylaw has a provision that allows for even watering during a state of water supply conservation, which allows up to three to four days per week, depending on the week. But the new, the new requirements will restrict that further, so that had to be appropriated, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a second. And then aligning a language of the existing bylaw more in line with the FASTEP model water conservation by law, in terms of some definitions and just some language, mostly minor. And then lastly, it required incorporating a provision to encourage proper installation And then lastly, it required a, incorporating a provision to encourage proper installation and efficient operation of automatic sprinkler systems. So, the WMA permit provided a few options to accomplish that, and we sat down with, um, as I said, the state owners there in town and talked about which might be more feasible to go into that in a little more detail. But we, uh, we drafted a, a proposed provision with that, which I'll get to. So that first major change, the seasonal non-essential outdoor water restrictions, um, I don't expect you to read this little chart over here. It's just, it's complicated. In a couple of words, that is a snapshot that came from the new Water Management Act permit, and, you know, depending on the time of year, I don't want to get into the details of it, but that's essentially what restricts, um, to last days a week. The maximum of two days per week when these conservation restrictions are in place. And this is all kind of, going back to the Charles River Basin is, um, more stressed in terms of groundwater withdrawals and usage, so this is what the new law state regulations require. And here's just kind of another snapshot of what, uh, Melis put into place this year, trying to comply with this. Uh, you know, as I said, the bylaw, uh, the, uh, permit came out in December. Permit actually required Melis to adopt these, um, bylaw changes by May 1st, which really just wasn't feasible, so we asked DEP for an extension to try to work with this, get it into the November town meeting instead of May town meeting or spring town meeting. And they, they, uh, provided that extension, so that's why I did it here. But, but Melis did, um, proactively go ahead and put the restrictions, the new, more stringent restrictions out there.
Can I ask a question about that real quick? We ran into an issue a few years ago where our town fields weren't being watered because of the water restrictions, and we ended up spending $30,000 starting over again on all of our fields. Would the town fields fall into that? Always allowing, it mentions golf courses and other items that are, you know, business driven. We'd have to make sure that our town, um, fields are allowed to be watered, otherwise we're going to have a huge issue if.
Yeah.
There's a drought. We can't afford to spend $30,000 a year fixing them after they fall apart.
Yeah, I believe, I think too, I would have to check.
These are fields owned by the town and the school and used for recreational purposes by the community, you know, year round.
I'll just try and look at the permit, but, but to answer your question.
I mean, I would think possibly into the core business function. If you're exempting golf courses, we're charging.
I would say so.
Yeah, and that's our core business, our rec department, we're not charging the fees.
Good argument.
Yeah.
I think we'd have a strong argument.
Yeah, that's the permit.
Yeah.
Are you still seeing my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, the not subject to restrictions include, make the core business, yeah, like you said.
I think that falls on our fields, absolutely.
I mean, yeah, I, I, I argue that as well.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, um, the changes, as I mentioned, lining languages across DEP bylaw, the definitions. Another change that was not strictly speaking required, but we proposed to include was, um, the original bylaw or the existing bylaw, the authority rests solely with the select board. Sometimes that can take a while if you don't have meetings regularly in the summer, like, or if you don't, you don't meet, I think you meet monthly in the summer. One revision that we suggested including, which was in the model bylaw as an optional, was to allow the DPW to act, um, uh, if it's a matter of permit compliance. So the select board still would have the authority to enact restrictions for whatever reason they deemed fit, if it was a public safety, public health concern. But if there was, you know, for example, the river gauge in the Charles dropped rapidly and you were going to be out of compliance with the permit if you didn't, you know, change the restrictions, um, quickly. That is proposed in the new bylaw that we discussed along with, um, Mike and Jim.
I think it makes sense. Yeah, I think it makes sense. It avoids the need for an emergency meeting of the board in the middle of the summer should.
Well, we wouldn't want that.
It's triggered.
Yeah, this gives the authority to do what you need to do anyway, quickly.
Okay.
Great. And then the last thing I mentioned was this, um, provision to encourage proper installation and efficient operation of sprinkler systems, automatic sprinkler systems. So, there was a, several options listed in the permit that you could choose from. Um, we talked these through, as I said, in our meeting. This one that you see here, topsoil preservation seemed to be the, the most feasible, um, to implement without too much, you know, uh, effort. The others included things like registering all auto irrigation systems, minimizing pot water use landscaping, which is pretty nebulous, and it would be a little bit tough, I think. How do you define that? Restrictions on land clearing and lawn size. So, this one here to, um, require all new construction to, um, have a minimum six inches of topsoil preserved at where it's swerved in the site. You know, where it is going to be carved. Um, that would seem to be, um, the easiest one to implement. And that is pretty much all I have. So as I mentioned, the, the goal is to have this voted on at town meetings in November.
So this is listed, this is listed in one of the bullet pointed.
As an article.
Articles.
Yeah, but does that six inches of topsoil, does that get pushed over to the building department? And how does that get?
Yeah, how do you find out?
How do we know that? How does a person know that? Because they're not going to get that rig.
Mike, I don't recall exactly what we discussed in terms of the mechanisms or.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll have to discuss that, um, with the, with the staff here to determine the best way to make sure that's enforced during construction.
Okay. Any questions, Craig?
Okay.
Erin, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Uh, it sounded to me like all of it is required, except that one thing that you said was not required. So, if it's required, I don't think we have a lot of questions.
I mean, in, in discussing this with the DPW director and with, you know, um, uh, our folks at Kleinfelder, I think we, we felt that this was the least difficult way to move forward with this. And, and, uh, would be, I think, the easiest for us to move forward with without really making it difficult for the property owners to still, you know.
I like that.
Maintain their property as best they can.
Okay, um.
I think, I think Craig had a good question. That will come up.
What?
About the fields. And it may come up at town meetings, so that's a good, yeah.
Okay, so. Do we have a?
Exactly.
We don't have a motion.
No.
Nope.
There is no motion.
This is just an overview.
Thank you, Kirsten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, so, the dog park, we're five minutes late. I'm trying to get on schedule, and apparently it doesn't matter. Okay. Dog park people.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, the whole purpose of this is just to refer this back to the planning board as part of the process, but we did invite them to come in to just give us a little background as to what they're actually looking for.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Watzke. Here is counsel.
From David Lap. I'm, I'm the individual trying to open the private dog park.
I'm not sure how much of a detailed presentation you want to have. Um, we've met with the planning board. That was on August, um, August 6th and September 10th, and laid out the, the, the ask. David has, uh, has a concept for a new kind of a business that would never have been contemplated before, and he's got the perfect place for it, located in your industrial district. And there's simply no provision in your current zoning bylaw that would allow this kind of a business use. And so the, the, the simple, really narrow change that we're proposing and that the planning board has recommended unanimously, that you refer it back to them to adopt the bylaw, is, uh, is, uh, inserting a new definition of the term private dog park. And then changing, uh, or adding a use in the industrial district to say that it's a permissible use by special permit. And it's, it's very, very, so narrowly crafted to, to allow this specific kind of thing in this building. I suppose it's possible that there may be another building that would have a, um, enough area in it that a, that a similar business could go in, but, uh, David has identified this as something where there's a real demand. It's, uh, it's a growing, uh, kind of business that's now spreading around the country, but this would happen to be only the second one in all of New England. Would you like to have David sort of give you a quick review of what, of what a private dog park actually is?
Sure.
All right, David.
Sure. All right. So quite simply, the easiest explanation, uh, of a private dog park is like a gym for dogs. We go to, we, we pay a monthly fee, and we go to the gym, we work out, and we leave. Very similar with a private dog park. The difference here is that there's a social aspect to it. The social aspect is that the dogs can be social with each other. It's a monitored park. So, what I mean by monitors, it means that there are experts in dog behavior to keep people and other dogs safe, because they are animals, right? So.
Which, the people of the. You saw that coming.
Do you want my opinion on that one?
Right there. Go ahead.
I have some opinions on that. However, dogs are actually very good communicators, so when something is awry, uh, somebody that is trained in dog behavior will know it well in advance. So that is the advantage of having a private dog park versus a public dog park that is not monitored. The other aspect to this is that it's also a social experience for people. There'll be coffee, there's a, it's a beer garden involved here with some beer and wine on tap and, and other beverages. Food trucks, it's not a restaurant, it's not a full-service restaurant. Matter of fact, the, the, the definition specifically says it's not and nor do, nor should it be. So there will be food trucks available, and those are rotating in and out, uh, through the, you know, any truck that's already approved with the Board of Health within the town of Melis. The advantage here is several things. One, it's indoors and outdoors. And if you have a dog and it's 10 degrees outside, or it's raining, or it's snowing, or it's sleeting and raining, those are not fun experiences or pleasant to be out in. This is an indoor park, so dogs can run, get their energy out, uh, have a great time. A tired pup is a happy pup. And then on top of that, the owners are happy too, because they're dry, they're warm, and they get to have a beer where their dogs play. Or a glass of wine, or a beverage of, of some sort that you, that, uh, is, uh, appropriate for you. That's really it in a nutshell. It's, it's rather simple. I mean, there's a lot of aspects to it. It's complex to run, but the concept is not too, too, necessarily complex. There'll also be grooming services. I'm going to be, I'm a dog trainer, so I'll be, we'll be doing training services. There's, uh, doggy daycares for, there's 9,000 dogs within five miles.
Okay, I don't know your questions, but you go first.
Go ahead. I've got no questions. Not yet.
Okay.
I care about watering the fields.
There's an existing building on the property, correct?
There is.
In which you're going to utilize?
Correct.
What's, how many square feet?
It's 10,000 square feet.
It's 10,000, just one big wide open?
Is, there's some office spaces.
Yeah.
So technically, it's 13,000 square feet, but from a real estate perspective, it's 10,000.
Okay.
Right, so there's some offices, and over those offices, some lofted space.
Okay.
I don't know how much that's going to survive my renovation.
Yeah.
But it is a 10,000 square foot, uh, indoor space, about 8,000 square feet at least will be used for the dogs.
Okay.
And then fenced in areas for the outside is probably going to be somewhere in the range of 20 to 25,000 square feet.
Twenty fi, how big is the lot?
An acre and a half.
The lot's an acre and a half, which is about 60,000 square feet, if my math is right. 10,000 to the building. Is it wet there? No?
No.
So, you're going to have 25,000 square feet fenced in outside?
Maybe a little less.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
I have a preliminary plan if you'd like to see it at some point, but it's very preliminary.
I think I saw your, your thing. Okay, and so, and what kind of fencing are we talking about? Chain link fence?
Um, you know what? I don't know, but it's going to be like a higher fence. It's going to be stockade of some sort. But the exact type of fencing, I don't have an answer to that yet, but it's going to be higher. It's not going to be something low that dogs can jump over.
And what kind of, do you, is there a paved parking lot?
There will be.
There will be?
There will be.
Okay.
There is partially now.
Yeah.
But it's in severe disrepair, so I'm going to fix that.
And the food trucks, just, they'll come and go, whatever, that's fine. You'll maybe have some, I don't know, picnic tables outside?
There'll be some picnic tables inside and outside. It'll be just places to sit. It'll be, it'll be a comfortable, fun space. It is a park, right? So, and it's going to feel like a park. Only part of the park will be indoors.
And, but you're only going to provide, um, drinks. When I say you, I mean, inside, you're going to have a bar. You don't have a kitchen inside?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, it's drinks.
Yeah.
Beer, wine, soda, water. Is there mixed drinks?
Coffee. And coffee. No, it's not a, not a.
No vodka time at all?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. Not, not yet.
Not yet? Well, wait.
I don't, I don't plan on that, but.
Okay.
You know, you.
I don't have a dog.
How, how demand happens.
I'll be there.
You do not need to have a dog to come.
Oh, you don't need a dog to come?
You do not. A dog needs a human to come, though.
Listen, I love, I, I love the whole thing of it. Whether it's going to work or not, that's your problem, not mine.
Right.
The only thing that concerns me, I only have one concern, really. Your outside space and noise. Dogs bark. The best behaved or the worst that they bark. There are a lot of, um, houses around you. You're surrounded. There's going to be, right before you, on the same side, is going to be a big housing project. Right behind, after you, I know where you are, you're in, um, are you buying the property by the way, leasing?
I'm working on it, yes.
Bab far.
From Bab far?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if you go a little bit further, there's going to be another subdivision with housing. You've got Farm Street right behind you. Dog barks, it can be 10 miles away, and it's like it's in your backyard. You've got Cedar Street, big development. I'm, that's my only concern.
So indoors will not be an issue, all right?
We hope not.
My experience has been, because I have traveled across the country to different dog parks, very similar business models all over the country, DC area, I've been down south, I've been out west. Part of my research in this entire business model was to go to see these places. And there's also another one in Everett, right?
Yeah.
Called Park Nine. It's the only other one in New England. It's shocking how little barking there is, and usually the barking is throughout, from like, one dog, maybe two.
Okay.
One, my, one dog that starts it, maybe another one responds, but it, it's not as noisy as you would expect. Now, I'm going to be honest, that surprised me. I thought there'd be more barking.
Okay.
But a, a well-behaved dog is having fun. Barking just usually doesn't come into play. Dogs don't communicate verbally. Dogs communicate through body language.
Where do you think your hours, can I just? What do you think your hour, what are you thinking your hours are going to be?
During the week, probably seven to nine.
Seven AM to nine PM?
Yep.
And what about weekends?
Weekends, maybe nine to 10.
Okay. What happens if they do, what, 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 what do we do if we put a condition on that they can't be?
Well, Madam, Madam Chair, just adding, so you are, you are the LLA. You are the local licensing authority for the alcohol piece of it, so you can, in the, for the wine and malt piece of it, say you could only serve until eight o'clock at night.
I'm not worried about the people.
Well, but the people come the dogs, right? So I'm saying, you can't, you will have some control over that piece of it still beyond what's happening here.
If I may.
Exactly.
So if there's barking at nine or 9:30 at night, y- you could have a hearing and reduce those hours.
And say, right, that you want it to end in whatever.
Also, if I may.
Go, you, you may.
Yeah, thank you. It's not, the, the way the, the bylaw amendment is proposed, it's not an as-of-right use, it's a special permit use.
Yeah.
And so the special permit granting authority.
They can put a condition.
Will, will, will we expect?
Exactly.
Put conditions on that, that will limit the potential for that kind of noise? And so, I would expect that if it turned out that there were, there were real problems with noise outside, that the permit would require that you not use the outdoor space, uh, after a certain hour.
After a certain hour.
That you, you open up the indoor and you have all the dogs playing inside after a certain hour.
Exactly.
The indoor space is very large, so.
I'm sorry?
The indoor space is large, so.
And one of our biggest complaints is the noise from Pickle.
I was just going to say. That's what I was gonna say. Maybe there is, maybe there are walls to mitigate the noise.
Joyce Boyardi, 206 Orchard Street. I'm giggling because my daughter has play dates with her, I mean, her dog has play dates with the neighborhood dogs, so it's like, and she's married and has kids, so it's now just getting bigger and bigger as far as these play dates. My concern would be the noise factor. Pickleball created, I mean, they had to put noise barriers up and everything. They're not, it's in a neighborhood, they're not allowed to play. But they can play until eight o'clock, and then that's it. Lights are off the, because of the neighbors' complaints. I think I'm probably giving you information so that you're aware of, because sometimes you're not aware of what things go on in the town, and also the concerns. The other thing that I would be concerned about is serving alcohol but not having food in the establishment, because then you're not only monitoring the dogs, but you're monitoring the people. And as good as you can do, I mean, even bans, even if you've got a ban for two-drink minimum, they've got, you know, they can go and get a drink.
Or maximum.
Yeah, max, I mean, maximum.
Maximum.
Thank you. Two-drink maximum. They're with other people who maybe one is drinking and the other, I mean, there's always ways to get around it, but my concern is not, yeah, I think it's great having food trucks, but the alcohol issue would be a concern to me. And my other thing is the behavior of dogs. Yeah, they're great, but they, they, who's gonna monitor those dogs as far as, you know, they're, I've gone to dog parks, outside dog parks with my daughter's in-laws who have dogs and my daughter, and there's always a dog that ends up attacking another dog.
Okay, I can address several of these pieces?
Thank you.
So, I can address, so, yes. So, thank you very much. I can actually address virtually all of that. The food piece of it is, just as a restaurant, it's not a restaurant, let's be clear, but just as a restaurant, right, like a restaurant would be, you have food offerings, right? And it's the same thing when somebody sits at a bar at a restaurant. You can force them to order food or?
Not.
Not, right? It's really no, no difference. And I'm not serving any hard alcohol, right? So, so the alcohol volume is going to be less. From a, from the noise perspective, maybe that's an addressing partly, partly for the fence, right? It could be a noise-baffling fence.
Could be.
Right?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was gonna say.
And as far as the behavior of the dogs go, as I mentioned, it is a monitored park. These are trained individuals that understand dog behavior. The dog does not get a membership without an evaluation. Some of this is actually just the same as, as a doggy daycare is, right? So they're all required to have certain amount of shots, their inoculations, they have to have, literally, there's a system that tracks the health of these dogs and the, the, the shots, that they're up to date on shots and everything else. You gotta prove that. So from a health perspective, that is, this is, this is not even policy, this is the law, so I have to follow that.
Yeah, I'm less concerned about that.
Yeah, I'm not, I.
We're not concerned about that at all.
Listen, I'm not.
The key, I thought, was, was the, a behavioral analysis of the dog, or behavioral review, before the dog is allowed to become a member of this facility. So it's not the same as a public park where anybody brings a dog. You're, you're only allowing dogs that you have actually met and reviewed and.
Listen, I don't, I don't question your enthusiasm or your, your methodology. I don't. If you're gonna do something like this, I'm sure you've, you've vetted it.
Oh, yes.
Way better than me. But I just do wanna say that you're not in an industrial park. I mean, it may seem like it, but there's houses, and they're going, you don't see them yet, but there's gonna be a development right after you pass the bowling alley, that whole corner leading up to you. And then right after you, you can see the construction going on. There're gonna be two communities, stacked communities. Noise rises, that's all. And then behind you, there's our established one, and then there's another established one. So putting your notice, I'm sure you'll take care of it.
Won't be a, it won't be a problem from.
Yeah. So, Aaron, you still with us? Do we have, is there a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, wake up.
I'm here.
What do you got?
I'm here.
Yep.
It's moved that the board refer the proposed private dog park zoning bylaw amendment to the planning board for a public hearing at their October 8, 2024 meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
You're good.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Have fun out there.
Very nice. Good luck.
We don't need a door. Okay, next. Next, next, next. We got.
So full disclosure, the original agenda, I had Mr. Cannon speaking to both the dog park, as well as this, and he emailed and said.
That's fine.
Not for nothing, but I don't know anything about it's okay.
My memory's going. I'm like, it could be me, but I don't even.
All right, we got some in and hope, some zoning.
So sorry about that. I thought it was funny.
Go ahead, Ted.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ted Cannon, on behalf of the petitioner, CNA Partners, I'm with Michael Chase, part of the ownership group. This is the, concerns the CV2 district only, the Innenhold complex. And we appeared before the planning board to request some changes to the zoning, to expand some of the opportunities there, 'cause frankly, it's been a struggle. It's a unique structure, there are challenges, and all of the suggestions that we have made are to, to take some of the noes and convert them to special permit planning board. 'Cause when potential applicant or tenants see no, they just say, I'm not going through, I'm not, I'm not spending the time. But if it's a special permit with conditions, then, okay, you know, we'll give that a shot. So that's kinda where we are in the, while we were in this process, a very unique opportunity presented itself, which was kinda a catalyst, which is someone who wants to really develop some artisan, artisan space offices to encourage artists to come to work on their craft. And then part of what we're asking is a change to the definition, which the planning board suggested, but also a provision to the use regulations to allow periodically the, the owner to come and petition this board with a, a sort of rudimentary plan, so not really a special permit, but to ask permission to have events. You know, what are your hours going to be? How many people gonna be there? Do you wanna serve alcohol? But to allow the artisans to showcase what they're working on, have gallery space, potentially purchase artwork, maybe serve wine and cheese along the way, those kinds, maybe have some music. Those opportunities would be rare, but would come to this board for permission to, to do that. And so that's really why we're here. We met with enthusiasm at the planning board. I don't know if you want me to take you through each of the changes?
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
Because I, I need to, I appreciate that, that you're here, and I, I know that this board, that the way it's set up is that you go to the planning board, the planning board kicks it over to here, and we're supposed to just kick it back to them to whatever. But I'm not going to do that. Because, I don't know if you know the history, I know you know the history. I don't know, Ted, if you know the history, but I'm just gonna give you a little brief history, what, what this property is. 20 or some odd years ago, I don't know the exact date, under your predecessor, Aspenwall, the town commissioned a study to what to do with your land, which I thought was hilarious, because it was your land. Why do we care? But apparently, we did. So the study comes in and it says that the best use for the town, now, I know you're, what you might think is best and what we think is best may not emerge, but what the study came out and said was, this is the center of town, this is the center of our town, right? And what it proposed was a mixed-use development. They wanted some housing, they wanted some office, they wanted some retail, a little mix of everything. And so with that, the town created zoning and went to town meeting. Now, I was at that town meeting. I don't know if you were there, but somebody was there, because you were not happy, your family was not happy with that, because we were changing the zoning on you. But we did do that, and we changed the zoning, and it got passed the town meeting. Now, the reason was because we, what's, what's best for the town? Well, that's, it's warehouse. What you have now are warehouses, warehouses. Since the garden shop left and the linen place left, the retail is gone, and it's warehousing in the middle of our town. And we don't think that that's the best, we don't think that's good for the town. So we still don't think that's good for the town. I know I don't, hear from whatever, and this undoes what we did 20-something years ago, and I know that you, you wanna undo that, because, I, I really don't, I, I mean, I wanna drill down on a few of these, but you do know that whatever use you had, and it's continuous, it seems to be continuous, you still have, right? Your grandfather. I mean, I don't.
Certain uses.
For certain uses, your grandfather. So you wanna go back, so, I mean, I, I, you, I know people can't see, but we're looking at your zoning changes, and you have one, two, three, four, five, six. And you have to really const, you didn't say what they were, so you gotta go into the zoning bylaw, you gotta see what they are, and then you go to see what you want. Well, right away, the artisanal, artisanal and craftmaker space, I don't, I don't think anybody would have a problem with that.
Right. I think that, I was at that meeting 20 years ago, I think that was one of the type of things that made sense.
I don't think, it seems to be, I mean, I don't know if people are gonna be there working, all I can think of is the movie Ghost. Are they gonna be there working on their pottery, and then they put it in the kiln, and then they wanna put it for sale later? Is that what we're talking about?
It would be space for them to create. It would include, we included in the definition, gallery space, so people could, so they could display it, people could, could visit and watch it.
Yep.
We included retail sales, so they would have the opportunity to support themselves.
Yep.
So that's there. And then the, outside of the use table, the paragraph to the use regulation had the provision to allow events periodically.
Yeah, the events thing, I mean, I don't know if you're, events thing, if somebody wants to do, like in this town or any town, if you wanna do like a town sometime, do a town yacht, a townwide yacht sale.
Yeah.
So they come in, they get a special one day?
If, if it's permitted already, then that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. I didn't have, it was kinda quick.
I don't see anything with that. I don't see anything with the, with the artisanal piece.
Sure.
You have, and the outdoor sales, I don't see anything. A drive-up window, I see, that's A, 4A. You wanna add a drive-up window.
Well.
In case you get a McDonald's or a Wendy's. We do have one, well.
Restaurants, banks, you know, you know, CVS or Walgreens.
I have no problem, honestly, this is just me.
Yep.
Drive-up window makes sense. It's the rest of it that I, I, I don't like any of it. I don't like the light manufacturing. I don't like construction industry with wholesale suppliers outside. I don't like construction materials for retail suppliers. I don't like the wholesale trade and distribution, which is warehousing, which I think is grandfathered. And then you have outdoor storage. I don't like, I don't, this, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make this less whatever, because I think this leads into a larger zoning conversation. I know that the planning board has wanted to look at our zoning bylaw for a long time. And this piece is a big piece of it. So I happened to talk to the planning board, and we're going to use this as a jumping-off spot and take a look at our zoning bylaw and see what we are willing to do for that area and some others, and not kick this back. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take an under advisement. That's my suggestion for the board. This is something, we have a huge industrial district in Millis. I mean, it's half of 109. If you were there, this would be a no-brainer. Down by the Colt Building, which you are familiar with, thank you for the landscaping, by the way, they finally took care of it. We would have no problem. But this dog park they're talking about is in our industrially area. Unfortunately for you, or fortunately, one or the other, you're right smack in the middle of downtown. All I can see are tractor-trailer trucks, which we don't have enough problems with 109. Just on, back and forth, back and forth, going in, delivering, picking up. With your wholesale sales and your outdoor storage, that's industrial park stuff in, in my book.
So I, I would just respectfully ask you to consider certain uses within that. So for example, we had outside storage with our garden center.
Yes, you did.
I think it added a lot of value to the town. I wish we were still running them.
So do I.
So do I.
So we're looking for that.
Yep.
Let's say there's something, you know.
Well, I thought to myself, like a Home Depot.
Exactly. But they don't, they don't unfortunately wanna be here, they wanna be right on the highway.
You don't have to tell me. I tried to lease across the street. I've heard the same story. You don't have traffic count, no traffic count, no traffic.
But what if there was a smaller operation that was willing to be local, and they wanted to have some materials outside? If, you know, I know we had a garden center in a particular town, they said, that's great, we want you to just screen in a little bit?
Yes.
So that's really what we're thinking about?
I understand, but if you put this in, it could be just a materials yard. I have a materials yard down at the industrial park. It's just a materials yard. I have, I put some blocks up and I have loan there.
Yeah.
If I were to.
Yeah, I think the history over 20 years since the zoning change has demonstrated that it has failed the site. And the town has just done an MBTA housing overlay district right around, around this site, specifically excluding the site. So we're talking housing at this site, and then to specifically exclude.
Well, wait, I was on that committee.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and we deliberately did that, because the MBTA housing restricted us to two parking spaces for housing units, nothing for retail. So we thought that'd be the kiss of death for our best retail, the stat area in town. So what we would like to do, and this is what the plan, this came out of that conversation, expand the, what's it, Millis overlay district, something, in what we have over at, by the library.
Right.
Where it's housing up above, retail down below, but then we're allowed to put in adequate parking. We're allowed to do what we need to do to make it work. So we have a desire to have this be an overlay district with housing, and with, at least a lot of us do, with housing and commercial. And the MBTA wasn't going to allow that. It would restrict us on parking, the amount of square foot for retail, it, it just didn't make sense. We didn't think it would ever be developed with that. So by putting housing directly behind it, and housing up the hill from it, we thought it'd become more attractive for commercial. So if we extend that, that district down to that area, it might actually have a chance to be something other than what we envision here with trucks and other things. It is the heart of the downtown. It's our only commercial area.
And with all of the noes on the use table, that's why you're seeing those trucks. You're only seeing what's grandfathered in. So I would ask that you not throw the baby out with the bathwater. For example, the, the artisanal opportunity is just that, and if we miss this opportunity, we'll, they will have to move on to another place. So I think it, it's a great opportunity for the town in Millis.
And I agree with some, I agree with that one absolutely. And I think that the point that we'd like to do the larger study with it, see what we come up with, is our view at least here. But, but if there is an opportunity for the artisanal craftmaker space right now.
I would just suggest, irrespective of whatever the decision is by this board, I would ask that you definitely approve that going to the planning board and then to the town, because we are currently talking to that organization.
I would agree with that one. I think that's a nice, that's the direction we're going.
They'll walk it.
Yeah.
And I would ask if there's any others, and again, it's, it's, these are all being asked not by right, but by special permit.
I know. I get it.
Just, and, and as you know, the planning board has broad discretion on a special permit. So word can spread around that this is not the kind of use that we want. But if it fits, and if it expands the opportunities that aren't there now, then it would be great to have that opportunity, have the planning board oversight and condition it appropriately so we're getting away from the trucks and getting more into this, opportunities like this. That, that's really what's, what's here, and that's why. That's really what's what's here and that's why you're seeing the trucks. So, you know, we would gratefully accept as many of the special permit opportunities as you are willing to.
One or the other, if I could.
Yep, sure.
So we we use, you know, James Stubblebine, Stubblebine Broker, Stubblebine Company. And he'll have companies that come to him from time to time. And it may be uses that you would like in the town, but we can't even submit it because when they see the N on, and it's a definite no, they're like, well, we're not going to wait and we're not going to put money into it. And you probably, you know, you know, you probably know how that works also and.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what kind of you. Give me a for instance. I just hear, I hear through the grapevine that you're a tough negotiator.
Me personally? I think you might be referring to my father.
I know, I remember your father, by the way, very fondly.
Thank you.
He and my mother were pretty close, actually.
I know he spoke highly of your mom.
He was very good to my mother and to this town. But what uses are you, like, give me a for instance?
I just know from time to time, people have gone to James and said, you know, we have an interest in the site. He mentioned there was a manufacturing company one time, not one that is like really noisy with pollution or anything, but they were technically manufacturing. We couldn't present it to them. We were their top choice. So we nor would, we don't want to force it upon the town and say, oh, it's a definite yes and we're going to try to. So we're just proposing by special permit to leave the power up to the town.
I get that.
But we can't, they just walk.
I listen, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying, but I'll tell you that I don't, I I just don't see. It's not the place for light manufacturing. It's just in my book.
I would, yeah, I would suggest we push it back to the planning board with at least the artisanal space.
We can do the, yeah, I don't mind the artisanal. I don't mind the drive up window.
Where are the other things on?
And we're not gonna, listen, I'm not going to drag you out forever. This, I'm a person that does things, you know? And so we will meet with the planning board. If I invite you in, I'll let you in. And we'll take a closer look.
Construction industry.
At.
Supplies and construction.
What we're willing to do there.
But we can refer back to those too. Item number six, some principal uses.
Well, it's number.
Well, no, I'm looking at the table.
The table would be, I don't even see the artist.
You go to the next.
Oh, it's this one right here.
Yeah, that's inserted as item number 43.
That would be new.
Yeah, that's a new item 43. That piece.
So you can, well, refer back to the planning board. We can refer back one, two and three, one, one and two, right?
Their master sheet, okay.
Because those are, I don't know why 43.
That's the table line.
Oh, just the table. So I don't mind that. You don't need the outdoor sales periodically. I don't even know what that means because you don't just put in something that says outdoor sales periodically. I mean, I don't know what that looks like.
No, that was the, that was the, that was not to the table.
I know, it's just a new section H.
Right, that was if they wanted to have events. And by the outdoor sales, it's for the, this is under for the artisans. If they wanted to be able to have an outdoor event with music.
Yeah, I could speak to that. So for example, in place, you know, my my mom has a summer house in Narragansett. If you've been there before. And that little area across from the Coast Guard House, they'll sometimes have artists that come there and they have their tents.
You do know this is Millis Route 109.
Yeah.
Just throwing Narragansett.
Definitely not Narragansett. But the point is, it's a lot of fun. You know, there artists are there and so it's just from time to time, those artists could display their their product. I think it would be good for the town. It wouldn't be all the time. It would be at your discretion.
They would have to come to this board for for approval.
And we, and I think we'd be open to considering those items when they came forward.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I don't know why, Ted, I'm just, I'm just confused. I don't know why you need this section. And the Zebra da da da, May, subject to the Select Board, conduct out pursuant to a plan.
Does any of this have to do with your, are you coming? Yeah, and I was gonna say, does any of this have to do with your, the newest person who is going over there, who is planning to go over there for cider?
No, this is, this is only.
None of this.
No, this is just the artisan.
No, but I'm saying none of these pieces have to do with that business from stopping that business from coming in, correct?
No, it has nothing to do with them.
Okay, totally different.
I think they would be fabulous for the for the town.
I do too.
They will be fabulous for the town.
I do too.
That was actually one of the items that came up on the list from 20 years ago. Well, it takes us 20 years, but we got it.
No, I think that would be fabulous. That's why I'm like, does any of this have to do with that?
My question, Ted, is.
Yep.
May, subject to the Select Board, outdoor sales. So every time they wanted this artisan piece, wants to do an outdoor sale, they're going to come with a plan to the Select Board?
You could, you could call it an outdoor event.
I know, but are they going to come with?
Yes, yes.
Every single time?
Well, it's.
Then what do you need? You don't need it.
It's only going to be maybe four or five times a year, if that.
So I don't, I don't think we need it in there because anybody can approach us to do that on our property day out.
Fine.
You can come from one day out to our license. They can come for.
Fine, if it's a temporary, then that's fine.
They can come.
So can we refer it back with items one, two and 40, and table change 43? And whatever the outdoor window is.
A, 4A.
The drive up one is, yeah, that's item six under retail and service.
So those two, I agree to forward back to the planning board and we will continue the discussion on the overall zoning. And we'll have a conversation.
I would expect that by next town meeting.
Is that a no to the accessory outside storage?
Yes, that is a no to the accessory outside storage. Aaron, what do you got?
Just, yeah. I need to be a little clearer on what I'm motioning.
Yes.
Item one and two from their list, item 4A from their list and item 43 from the table.
Yeah, you got it.
You got it.
Okay.
Item 43 is to add to the table.
Right, to add to the table, add item 43 to the table.
Do you want Craig to do it, Aaron? Are you good?
No, I can do it.
Okay.
I can see her eyes.
I move that the board refer the proposed Anne Hope Complex zoning by law amendment of one and two, 4A, and add item number 43 to the table. Back to the planning board for a public hearing at their October 8, 2024 meeting.
Second.
That was awesome. It's been moved in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll get the rest of it squared.
We will get it.
Yeah.
We will get it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, the next item, I believe, is the Community Impact Contract. This is Community Impact, which has been working with us for several years, providing social worker services funded through the HCA funds. This year, it's funded at an amount of $35,000 over 12 months. So I'm requesting that the board vote to approve the contract and authorize me to sign it on behalf of the town.
Okay, is there no motion?
There's a motion.
Oh, there is. Sorry, go ahead, Aaron, sorry.
I move that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a contract between the town and Millis and Community Impact Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $35,000 fiscal year 25.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next?
Madam Chair, in your packet, you'll see a memo from Jim McKay, the Director of Public Works, requesting that the board authorize me to approve a contract in the amount of $25,000 for line painting with Pavement Markings K5 Corporation. And that, again, that memo is in your packet.
Yep.
Okay. I move that the board approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a contract for line painting with Pavement Markings K5 Corporation through the NA PC for an amount of $25,000 for fiscal year 25.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Next?
So Madam Chair, in your, in your packet, you had an item listing the, some of the proposed articles for the fall annual town meeting. This evening, I provided you with an updated copy of that.
Yep.
So I want to just very briefly go through those items and see if there's any items that the, that the board may want to add in addition to those at this point or if there's any questions or concerns about any of the items currently there.
Okay.
So the first item, again, in no particular order, the first item is unpaid bills. We have this at every fall annual town meeting to address any bills that, for whatever reason, did not get paid before the end of the prior fiscal year. The second item is any needed adjustments to the current fiscal year's operating budget. We don't have really any at this moment, but this leaves that open and we'll be reviewing that. I did ask the finance director to come this evening in case there's any questions for her on anything as well. The next item is capital projects. As the board's aware, the Capital Planning Committee is currently having a series of meetings with boards, committees, department heads on any needed capital projects for for funding at the fall town meeting. The next two items are related to the Community Preservation Commission, projects that have been submitted to them for possible funding of the Lansing, Millis Building Project, Repair Project, and signage for various conservation property in town. The next item was requested by the, by the Treasurer Collector to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54B, subsection 1, to allow town trust funds to be invested in accordance with MGL, Chapter 203C, the so-called prudent investment rule. And I can certainly, if you have any questions, I know our finance director is also a treasurer.
I don't have any questions. Keep going.
All right. The next two items have to do with requests from residents who have an interest in purchasing currently unused town parcels. We can, we'll certainly be discussing that in more detail further on. The next two items have to do with changes to Millis's general bylaws, one having to do with water management, which the board discussed earlier this evening with Kleinfelter Consultant, Kirsten, and the other having to do with off-street parking and loading regulations. And then the next one is the one that a lot of towns have been talking about the past year, the multifamily overlay district, otherwise known as the MBTA 3A requirements.
They're coming in in a couple of weeks to present.
A week from today.
A week from today.
Yeah.
So they're coming in to present and then the planning board will have.
Present to who?
Us.
Yeah, your next meeting's next Monday.
I won't have any questions.
I hope not.
Jody, I think Jody's.
After two years of attending all the meetings, I have no questions.
I think Jody's coming to speak to us.
Jody Garzaan is coming in to speak to us.
And the planning board is meeting to finalize their decision on that shortly after they present to us.
Their meeting is the next evening, I believe.
Okay.
So.
And so, all right. And the next one is a zoning by law amendment having to do with the dog park, which we just discussed this evening, as well as zoning by law amendments having to do with Anne and Hope Complex, again, which we just discussed. The next items, several items, we generally put on every town meeting is the reviewing, putting fund, additional funds into the unemployment fund, the OPEB fund and the stabilization fund. We did have one petition article that came in, which I think you've all received a copy of.
Yes.
I have.
That's what I said, a petition.
That's what the spell check required.
Yeah.
So. We have discussed that article with town council, who has basically said that that article is unenforceable. I mean, town meeting could vote any way they like on it, but it's an unenforceable article. And and there's two other items that the board could consider. One, which we've done over the past several years, when the funds allowed, is possible additional funds for road construction. So that could be added as well as putting additional funds into our 111F fund, which is having to do with costs associated with police and fire injured on duty incidents.
Yep.
So those are the items currently there. Certainly, if there are any items that the board feels are missing, should be added for discussion going forward, we can do that. The, you closed the warrant this evening for this. But again, the board can itself add and remove articles at at any meeting.
After we get a little further down the road, not tonight, but I think the 111F should probably be included and I think roads should certainly be included since we said, I don't know, 3.5 million of free cash.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think there's money for roads.
Okay.
So what I will do is between now and your meeting next Monday, I'll put together a first full draft of a of a warrant. There may be a few pieces that still need to be filled in, but at least you'll, you'll pretty much have the document before you to review.
And just totally procedural question. Should they vote the Community Preservation Lansing, Millis item before the capital project, since it's also included in the capital and each is paying half? And I hate to have it shot down in the capital project. Should it be, should it be?
Oh, right.
Yeah, I mean, certainly.
I just would like to get the funding in the right order.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can put it any order that you'd like. We could certainly put the community preservation ones right before the capital.
Yeah, because then if it fails at community preservation, we won't have enough money in capital projects to do it all.
Absolutely.
And we know what we're.
Okay.
All right, and I'll have that draft for you for your next meeting.
Okay, what have we got?
Liaison, liaison updates.
Liaison?
That's what I'm speaking for.
Can't recall what it is.
I know, where did you go? You didn't vote of anyone I was having.
No, I was, I was at the MBTA meeting, MBTA meeting, yeah.
Oh, that's one.
Yeah, I went to that one. Not the spoiled surprise. It's a good plan. I think you're gonna like it. There were a lot of good questions raised and a lot of items were, actually, I'll back them up. There was the concern that we didn't have adequate parking. There is a requirement that you have, you can't have too much parking because they want the housing, they want to be housing, not parking lots. That's the reason we left Anne and Hope out of it. But the proposal now includes one, the same as our existing zoning, one parking spot for one bedroom, two sparking spot, two parking spots for two or more bedrooms with one additional guest spot for every eight units in the development. So that gives us some, that seemed to meet a lot of the needs for it. The setbacks were changed from 12 feet to 20 feet in the back. Some items like that.
Yeah, I remember.
Minor items, but I think it's mostly taken care of. And the two areas would be considered as an overlay over at Stony Brook and an overlay at the J factory. So neither one of those would impact neighborhoods So, neither one of those would impact neighborhoods, and it would clean up those two areas, give some potential for some new development.
Okay. I didn't have anything, I don't think.
I went, maybe not.
Aaron, did you have, did you have any liaison, yeah?
I did, I have two. I went to cemetery committee, which is my favorite. It was nice to be back. And.
Did they miss me terribly?
They did.
Oh, did they? You hesitated, I'm not believing the word you said.
Yeah.
Talked about some aesthetic changes in, I think it was section G, and some grooming of the, of a hill next to it that would kind of bring you down to the next section. So, most of it was some discussions of some aesthetic changes and some markers to mark sections off, so that people could better find their way. We also, I also went to the capital, no, Community Preservation Commission, and we talked about, John Sedman had been to our meeting last time to talk about signs for, you know, Millis Town land. And the CPC did authorize $15,000 to go on the warrant for the town meeting for those signs. And then, we discussed the Lansing-Millis building, and they authorized, I think it was $125,000, which would be matched by us putting in that money with, from capital planning for that effort for roofing and sealing up the exterior. Which I pretty much answered, okay.
Yeah, you got it.
All right.
Did it?
Nothing, you got nothing?
Well, I was at that meeting, but that doesn't count. This didn't count. No, that one was a quorum.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The other one wasn't a quorum.
There you go.
The other CPC, which we're going to change, I've decided. One of them's just gonna be Preservation Committee, PC.
Well, I think that might be a state-designated committee.
Yeah, it is.
I don't care. In my mind, listen, I'm chair. It's gonna be Preservation Committee, and then the other one, forget the Community Preservation. We don't need two CPCs. And then the other one will be the Capital Planning Committee. I think we should have planning and preservation.
I, I would just like to add, I'm not a select board member, but since Ellen did not join this piece of the committee for the Energy Committee, and I stepped into her shoes, I was at, I sort of did. So, for the Energy Committee today, she wasn't invited. So, anyway, there was a.
Which I'm okay with, by the way.
FYI, the Energy Committee put out an RFP, looking for a consultant to help us with the climate action plan